First up we have, uh, Roll Cup, please.
Councilman Sprungy.
Present.
Councilman Livingston.
Present.
Councilman McCraths.
Present.
Councilman Taylor.
Present.
Councilman Papistrak.
And President.
Councilman Massa.
Present.
President Scanlon.
Present.
All seven here.
Thank you. First up we have, uh, Paul Palmer and Jake Brigham, talk about the parks. Got him?
Alright, uh, our first, uh, issue here is, uh, late last year we, uh, asked to change titles, uh, in the Parks Department and, uh, we would like to reverse that decision on our part. Uh, no, no position was filled, no money's been spent, so the money is there to, uh, reinstate the senior park maintainer position as it was before. Due to the workload, we realized that we really should've kept it the way it was, so, uh, we're asking for reinstatement.
Questions or comments?
You have someone to take that position yet?
Yep.
Yeah, from within, you have someone? Other questions or comments? Alright. On RL one nine dash one two zero, please.
And Jake here, our young apprentice, is here to, uh, represent us for the, uh, to accept a grant from the Pennus USDA in the total of, uh, one thousand dollars.
Okay?
Use it to get tennis supplies, uh, balls and rackets for the kids to take tennis lessons with it, all of our tennis courts around the city.
And that will be this year?
Yep, um, it's to be spent, um, for this year, for this program, but hopefully to use it for next year as well.
The equipment can be used, the money will be spent this year, so by like the end of August.
Yep, and then, uh, the company has, we just approved that we, what we spent it on, so it's not gonna be, it's for tennis, um, and for in entirety.
Other questions or comments?
Great job on that, Brad.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need to leave, man?
Yeah, I have the check with me and, um, this is just for a lot of this case.
Alright, thank you. Thank you.
Good work.
Okay, we had a discussion with Jerry Neistrom from, uh, Jacobs, about this plant, please. Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I thank you for allowing us to come and present before you this evening. There's been a lot of, um, information showing up on social websites about the plant. I think much of it has been misleading. Uh, I'll leave it to you people to decide the motivation of people for misleading information, whether it's a lack of knowledge or driving an agenda. But I'd like to go over some of the specific issues that, um, have been showing up lately. I've got a handout for you, so I'll walk you through some of the stuff.
Excuse me, Jerry, I don't get on social media, I mean, I don't know what sites if you're talking about, is there, is there any particular sites that this information's appearing on?
It's primarily appearing on Mr. Livingston's Facebook site. Just, I can tell us what my staff has provided to me, because I don't get on social media either. I've read a number of the things that were posted. So, I guess the first topic I wanted to talk about, there's been a lot of discussion about the influence plug valves, being into headhouse, about them being installed backwards and various misleading pieces of information. I don't want to go into all of them, because it probably would be too much technical detail for you. Uh, certainly we'll cover whatever you want to know, but, um, those twenty inch plug valves, there are four of them, they were put in by PC Construction. They, um, were put in, uh, under the direction of the valve manufacturer. The valve manufacturer certified the installation as being an acceptable means for, uh, the direction of installation. There's some issues that we have that we'd already discussed with, uh, the contractor about fixing, but there was an article or, uh, posting that came up, uh, this weekend, I think it was the latest one I saw, that said that there would be flow going to the, uh, the wastewater would go to the river, that is completely incorrect. The plan wrecked the installation. First off, let me explain. The, uh, posting said that they were installed backwards. Manufacturer says you can install them either direction. We've got printed literature from the manufacturer showing both different installations. Contractor chose one, the valve manufacturer representative certified the installation. We think, and the valve manufacturer now says, that he would prefer the other direction. So, that is going to be corrected. There would've been a potential long-term issue of, uh, operability, but by making the corrections that we're making, at no expense to the city, the valves will no longer have that potential issue. The, uh, four, as I said, uh, item B, the four plug valves were inspected by the manufacturer, certified for installation. They've now come back and said they would prefer rotating it a hundred and eighty degrees.
Excuse me, when you say no expense to the city, does that mean that...
PC Construction is at all costs, the bypass pumping and everything associated with, uh, remedying this issue. Uh, this was, been discussed many times at many meetings with plant staff and the management of the plant, so, not sure why people thought it was gonna be at the owner's expense, because it was clearly discussed with plant staff and, uh, management. Uh, as indicated in item C, they are, uh, dual directional and, um, it was brought, uh, up that the client would prefer it to be in the other orientation, checked with the manufacturer. And manufacturer's fine with that, in fact now is recommending that installation. There was a separate issue about rotating the valves on ninety degrees horizontally to position the indicator or the shaft in a better position for long-term maintenance. That is the issue that the manufacturer thought, uh, would potentially lead to, uh, earlier failure. That's always gonna be correct, uh, based on the discussions with contractor. As indicated in item E, this is at no cost, no sewage will be dumped to the river. The contractor will be in complete, uh, ability to fix this problem with no additional cost. Next item, there were some postings that showed up about leaks in walls. First off, I want to point out, ninety percent of the leaks and crack injections are on the existing walls up, not new construction with existing walls. And yes, we all, uh, in the, uh, early stage, early design stage, they recognized that this was gonna be an issue. So, there was money put into the, uh, actual bid to cover this cost. Uh, there's, uh, been some leaks in the existing walls at the, uh, maintenance building, which is the lower level or the administration building. Again, that was a pre-existing structure. So, we've taken money from contractor to fix those leaks, because we don't think it's right to have your maintenance building having these two walls.
Jerry, again, one more question on that, uh, 'cause when we took the, the tour, we noticed that was one wall, uh, where the two buildings seemed to meet.
Right.
Was it like the new building and the old building, and where there was a, uh, some water leaking at that point?
There is and was, and that is an incomplete portion of construction here. So, there is an expansion joint where the new construction meets the old construction, you can't physically tie those together, because they structurally rise and fall at different, uh, rates, so you can't tie them together physically. So, there is an expansion joint that goes all the way from the bottom of the foundation all the way up through the top. What was shown in the video and what you experienced and saw in the field is that joint is leaking, because it's not complete. Once we are able to complete the top portion of that structure, we can start sealing that joint from top to bottom. You don't want to start from bottom to top, because then you trap water places that you didn't want to trap. So, that's always been a plan, to seal that joint in the future. Person who said that it was, uh, faulty construction doesn't know the sequence of construction and doesn't understand it. I don't know why, but they never b- bothered to check with us regarding that. And then it shows, uh, item C, there's a number of places that, um, crack injection has been done. A lot of it in the CN galleries, which was the pre-existing walls, some of it in the administration buildings, lower levels, as I mentioned. Those issues have all been in varying stages of being addressed and will be completed before we are completing the constructions. So, that expansion joint will no longer leak once it's completed. Item three, the access hatch to the chemical tanks, there was a social media post that indicated that the access hatch couldn't be opened, because there was a beam on top of it. It's not an access, that was a hatch during fabrication by the manufacturer. In the picture, this is actually on its side, so if you rotate the page ninety degrees, each of these tanks actually has an access hatch on the side. You would never open that act, that hatch that was referred to as an access hatch in the future. It was for fabrication purposes. All instrumentation, venting, et cetera, can be accessed without entering the tank. These tanks, um, contain some extremely hostile chemicals. You don't want to do those things, but if you ever did have to, you would use the side access, not that, uh, access point that was referred to as an access hatch on top. The next item was, there was a post, and it was a, um, a stupid post by one of the contractor's previous employees. He's no longer with, uh, the team, he's moved on to other functions, not even with PC still. But he made comments about the valve being installed, uh, with shoddy workmanship, and he looked forward to being paid a second time. Number one, that is complete, uh, this statement. The valve was installed, as indicated in the first picture on, um, the last page, with the handle to the wall. There's a reason for that. The other side of that pipe is a walkway, it would potentially obstruct the walkway, and it would also be more exposed to being damaged during the demolition phase, it still has to happen up above it. So, valve was installed with the valve handle protected. That valve stem and that valve handle do not, um, move further from the pipe than they are at this time. You can see one of my people actually operating that valve. You could operate it open and close it completely, but because the plant had expressed a concern about it, contractor rotated that valve so that the valve actually works on the top, to satisfy the plant's, uh, staff's preferences. What that does is that means now that the plant staff, if they want to operate that valve, have to go get a ladder instead of being able to operate it from standing from a concrete slab, so.
Again, was there a reason that they wanted it on top?
Plant staff indicated they felt that it was, uh, preferential, uh, for the stem to be in the upper position. Manufacturer says it can be installed with the side or the top, they could go on either the twelve o'clock position, the three o'clock position, or the nine o'clock position. They just don't want it in the six o'clock position, where things tend to settle out in the bottom. And it was never in that condition, and again, what for somebody's, um, bad comments on social media, I don't know that we would even be discussing this particular issue. Any other questions?
Questions or comments?
Are we still gonna be, this meeting on the eleventh, is that still happening?
What meeting are you for?
The tour?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll be happy to give you all a tour anytime. There's a lot of good things happening.
Yeah, I was just checking to make sure, 'cause I, I don't want to overload this meeting with questions.
A lot of good things happening for the right players, um, out at the plant, so anytime y'all want to say, just let me know.
So, all this stuff was posted on social media without anyone ever contacting you to see what, uh, how much of this was actually true or not?
Nobody's ever reached out to us to ask us of any facts associated with these issues. We would've been happy to discuss those at any time that somebody wants to post.
Chris, let me say something that Jerry's saying. The very first thing that he has on this list is number one, was brought up for the first time, uh, at the last joint sewer meeting, okay? I was sitting there and I was listening to what people were saying. I'm on texting Jerry, okay? After that meeting, Jerry, myself, two people from the plant, and George Kova, all went down there and identified and went through the whole thing for probably about an hour.
About an hour.
Okay, everyone was satisfied. Here it is, three weeks later, this stuff's being posted on the website again.
Well, we saw, when we went on the, on the tour, it was, exactly, it was explained to us, so that we understood what was going on about. And, um, so, I mean, as a council, I'll speak for myself, but as a council as a whole, we all get muddied with this type of, uh, fabrications, I should say. So, uh, I take issue with you posting stuff, uh, as a councilman, and maybe we've, from now on, you should just say, "This is my opinion", rather than, uh, making people think that the whole, all of city council is, is, uh, I don't know, I don't like, I'm not gonna insult you, but I don't like being included in anything that you're doing, uh, as a, as a private citizen, I don't think you're doing as a councilman.
Well, to be clear, I didn't generate those posts, I shared posts that were on social media already, there's a, there's a difference.
Alright, did you, did you comment or comment or post any of these yourself?
No, these, these were shared by other people on social media and I, I shared them.
So, who's writing, who's writing about a twenty inch plug valve? Who's posting that? You were the one that's, that brought that up a couple of weeks ago, but I haven't.
Well, it was brought up at sewage board meeting by, I think Charlie Piersall brought it up at the last sewage board meeting. Actually, it was brought up, I think it was brought up at the, the meeting prior to that initially, and then Charlie came back to the last meeting to, to report that he had reached out to the manufacturer, uh, and confirmed the, uh, the install instructions that, that he had found for the, the valve, indicating that they were backwards.
Did you ever ask Jerry about it? Did you ever, I mean, you took a tour, did you ever ask him about it? Any of the stuff that you're, that you're sharing on, on, uh, Facebook?
I didn't.
And that's probably your first, your first mistake, is to go to the person at the source and, and before you share it or post on it, or comment at city council, uh, at the, uh, end of the meetings that you've been, uh, commenting about. I mean, I don't have my mind made up of which way I'm gonna vote. We're waiting for all the facts to come in, we're waiting for the bits to be open, but I think a lot of the, the employees, a lot of the public thinks that this is a, this is a done deal, because of the way that it's being, uh, misinformed.
Jerry, uh, thanks for coming and clarifying things from your end. I think that it would be, um, prudent just for us for that to keep happening. You know, obviously, when, when we have questions, when I have questions, you know, I'll, I'll be sure to reach out. How do you know that, that communication channel is open? Um, but, you know, Ron Lake, I don't know if he's still out right now, is he? Yeah, so, so, you know, we've never had the project manager, uh, come to, to a meeting and give those sorts of updates from the project instruction side. So, if, if it's not our project manager doing it, I think that just so we have the information or your side of the story, or however you want to put it, I think it would be helpful to have, uh, those updates keep coming from your guys' end for our side.
Yeah. Be happy. Uh, I would much rather we be talking about substantive issues than misinformation.
Sure, and you have to understand why we're so worried when, when, when the construction, uh, date for completion of, of this project keeps getting pushed back and back and back.
It's the biggest project we've ever had. Those things happen, I mean, try and build a house, and you think you're gonna finish it in June, and it gets done the following June sometimes. Construction, you never know what you're gonna have with construction, so you can't.
Councilman McCraths? I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay, our residents are already stressed out about the huge price tag we have on this, and I don't think we should be misinforming them along with the huge price tag, 'cause then it makes all of us look incompetent, and we've been really trying as best we can as city council for the last few years to make sure that this is going smoothly, and it just makes us, ourselves as city council, look like we're ignorant and arrogant, and I don't like being something to that as well. I want to make sure I get answers before I say anything to the residents for all of city council, that's our duty, that's all I have to say.
Councilman Livingston, do you normally share posts that you don't know are factual? Is that a, so what you normally do on Facebook?
Um, I mean, the posts that I'm sharing are, uh, put out there by staff at the plant. And, you know, they have a, I think a valid perspective on how things work at the plant, how things are supposed to work at the plant. I consider them and their position, their, um, perspective to be as close to expert as we're gonna get inside a city hall.
But you never, you never call to verify any of that information, to talk to the contractor, say, "Is this true? What I'm reading on, on, uh, social media, is this true?" You just admit it, you never called to verify?
I have to be completely honest with you, I'm not entirely clear on where the, the line is with, uh, with Jacobs as a bidder on this privatization RFP, given that there's a provision within the RFP that states specifically that the owners and the staff and the, uh, can't remember the last part, the, the owners and the staff at least are not supposed to communicate with the...
It's a different, this is a construction, this is a different arm, it's a different arm of, of, uh, of their, they're a huge corporation.
Your, uh, owning services proposal. That's not my role.
They're a huge corporation, this is just an arm of the corporation.
David, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, first of all, I think...
You want to step up?
Okay, well, now, first of all, I wanted to just take a moment to thank Jacobs, you know, for, for coming down and, uh, taking time to address, uh, these gross mischaracterizations. And, uh, I think, you know, with all due respect, Councilman Livingston, you know, there is a pattern here. In every opportunity, you are spreading misinformation, you are mischaracterizing things, and you are outright lying about what's going on with regards to this project. And for you to say that all you're doing is sharing posts that the employees post, you make a series of your own editorial comments on those posts, and you do that without talking to the people we have hired to oversee this project. You've not spoken to Ron Lake, you, you have not spoken to Ken Frank, even though you contact that office on a regular basis on a whole host of items. You haven't spoke really to anybody that has any authority, information, knowledge with regards to this project. So, for you to just say you're, you're, you know, just sharing that, I think is, is really disingenuous. And I think as elected officials, it is a very poor reflection on city council as a whole. And it's something I think that the administration is concerned about, and I don't know, uh, you know, you're not a lawyer, you're not an engineer, you have no qualifications to talk about this without talking to anybody directly involved in this. You can have your own opinion, you're entitled to have your own opinion on whatever it is you want to have, but you're not entitled to your own facts. You're an elected official, and you constantly make statements over and over again that are proven to be factually incorrect and false. There are times that the city attorney's offices had to call you, where you've actually, to your credit, taken down posts that have been misaccur- uh, inaccurate and spreading mistruths. And, you know, at a certain point, you have to be held accountable, and to simply say, you know, gee, you know, I'm not doing anything wrong here, I'm just sharing things, I think is, is disingenuous to say the least. So, you know, it's one thing to talk about this, but moving forward, I mean, what are you going to do? Are you going to ask questions like the other six council members ask with regards to this project? Or do you continue to just post misinformation? Do we need to come down here at every work session, every two weeks, and hand out a packet like this to all the council members, uh, outlining and responding to all the misstatements that you constantly make on a regular basis? Do we need to spend more attention just monitoring what you say on social media? This is a major project that's going on here. It is, you know, a quarter of a billion dollar project. You know, not to mention that we haven't heard a peep of most of, of any of these things until after the concept of discussing a public-private partnership or partnership. So, you know, from my standpoint, moving forward, there is a significant amount of misinformation that's coming out there. It's originating, uh, I would say, most of it, we're not gonna speak in absolutes, a lot of it, um, is being channeled through Councilman Livingston. And moving forward, I just think we need to have a, a plan on how we're gonna respond to this. Either you're going to be, become more responsible with your, your statements, or we are gonna just have to spend time doing this every couple of weeks. And so, how are you going to handle the misinformation you've put out there already? Are you gonna put this response on all of your social media pages?
I don't think it's fair to characterize it as misinformation. Misinformation is coming from the operators of our plant, the paid professionals who have been operating this facility for, some of them for decades. And so, to say that I haven't been talking to anybody is also a, a mischaracterization. I've been speaking with our staff, and I believe that they are...
Who are not, who are not involved in the construction project of the plant. I mean, do you, do you think that that's the best way to proceed? And that, you're entitled to your own opinion, but, I mean, what is your response to their response? I mean, they are professional engineers that the city of Binghamton has hired to manage this project, and they're basically saying, "Everything you're saying is not true", and they're providing photos and documentation. You know, a picture is worth a thousand word, thousand words. You know, it's, it's pretty, it's clear that the photos you posted or shared and commented on are grossly inaccurate and don't paint the entire story. I mean, that, that should be obvious to all of you after looking at this. So, I guess just from a starting standpoint, what is your reaction to this explanation and what you've just heard from the people we are paying to manage the project?
Well, I'm interested to know why this wasn't furnished to us in advance. I mean, if you wanted to get a, a reaction from me...
Because they're responding to you, they're responding to you.
So, they're responding to me, so they, they send, they bring it with them to the meeting, but I can't see it, you know, an hour beforehand, two hours beforehand, that this, this is... You're asking me to speak off the cuff? I don't, I don't do that. I'm not interested in speaking off the cuff and, and saying something that's, that's inaccurate here.
I'm doing it online all the time.
Not every day, you do it on Facebook a lot without asking anybody any questions.
But that's not true, I ask, I ask dozens of people questions.
None of which who are directly involved in this project?
In the construction of the project.
In the, in the, in the construction management of the project. I mean, you do understand, right, that there are employees who, who run the facility, that's one aspect of it, then there are individuals involved in the, in the reconstruction project, those who are managing that construction project, and then the discussions about whether or not to move forward with the public-private partnership. These are, and I think you may be merging all of these different moving parts together, I understand it's a very complex...
I'm not merging all of them together.
Okay, so you, you, you are okay talking with people and relying on people that are not involved, directly involved in the overseeing of the construction of this project? I, I just think that's very interesting, that we have a project manager, we have people that were paying money to manage this project, and you have a city attorney, you have a comptroller, you have a city engineer. None of those people, city engineer is also a member of the board, the board members? None of those people are people you want to call and ask questions about?
I speak to board members as well, I don't just speak to staff at the plant.
Well, we have hired people.
So, Jerry, does staff have access to Jacobs to, or any concerns regarding construction?
Talking about, talking about staff? Absolutely, we have meetings every week regarding construction projects that are going on out there. And the plant management is invited to those meetings, many of these issues, they already knew the answer to this. This isn't gonna surprise them, because we've been talking about it for months. They, they knew we were gonna fix the valves, that wasn't an issue. I don't know why it became an issue to y'all suddenly, but we'd already talked for a couple of months about the contractor's procedure for fixing the installation of those valves. The leaking walls, they've been talked about, uh, throughout, uh, throughout construction. The vast majority of it is on the existing structure. The engineer knew when they designed this project there were gonna be leaks that needed to be fixed. Uh, the access hatch, this issue was discussed at length with the plant staff, the management. at length with plant staff, the management and they knew the answer to this. I don't know why they don't know it now if they don't, but it was clearly discussed with them and explained to them.
With respect to the access hatch, under the impression that, uh, from time to time the levels, uh, in the tank needs to be checked and a gauge needs to be dropped in?
No, sir. You do not open that hatch to access to check levels. There are instrumentation that does that. These chemicals could overcome and kill you if you, uh, were exposed to them the wrong ways. These are hostile chemicals. You do not open those tanks to do that.
And that just directly contradicts what I'm hearing from plant staff who operate these, these pieces of equipment. And you're saying that you're, you're a construction manager. I mean, I don't, I mean, you're, you're saying that I shouldn't be, uh, talking to people at the plant about, um, construction issues because they're involved in operations, but you're speaking to the operations of somebody else?
It's my job to speak to the operations about things that are concerns to them during the construction process. Of course I speak to them. I would be irresponsible if I didn't speak to them.
I think also, just to clarify, no one is saying you can't talk to people at the plant. I think that just needs to be clarified. You, you can talk to as many people as the plant that you want. The point is, you're not talking to anybody directly involved in this. You can, anyone is free to talk, people at the plant, people are free to tour.
If you talk to one and you say, when you hear one story, say, you verify that with talking to somebody else. If both of them say the same thing, then you've gotta, you know, you've got something to talk about.
I mean, I don't know if, if we need to just, moving forward at your work sessions, plan on bringing something down to respond to, you know, misstatements on, on a regular basis?
I just don't wanna be-
I frankly never seen anything like this before.
Yeah, I don't wanna be in the same category as, as Mr. Livingston, uh, in this, in this environment because I don't have my mind made up. I think he does. It's just my opinion. I haven't seen enough, I don't have enough information to say that I would be going for a, a, a private management or if I will be going with keeping things the way they are, making changes here or there. There's, there's a lot of things you can, to, to talk about and we haven't even reached that point yet. So I don't, I mean, I don't know if, unless board has their mind made up that we're gonna vote one way or we're gonna vote the other without getting even, I mean, we don't even have ten percent of the information.
I think the, the owners would say they're in the same position, that despite the mischaracterization, characterization of where the owners are. But this is with, you know, regarding the, the specific, uh, construction that's going on like that. Um, most of those statements are really aimed, uh, aimed at that.
Jerry, can I get your contact information?
Absolutely. Telephone number's nine seven two, six seven zero, five one one four.
And do you have a preferred email address?
Jerry, J E R Y, period, Nystrom, N as in Nancy, Y S T R O M, at Jacobs, J A C O B S, dot com.
I'll be in touch moving forward.
Okay.
Maybe the, the next agenda, we should leave a, a space for this if, if needed. We can give a determination if we need to.
Jerry, can I just also ask you, in terms of designing, does staff have access to design?
Absolutely. During the design phase, staff had input to this design with GHD. They had a lot of input to it. Some of the things that are done are specifically their preferences, not necessarily the engineer's preference, but they were trying to meet the desires of the plant as they designed this project. Uh, even included the town of Vestal's fire department so that when we do get ready to turn over the methanol system, it's not gonna be a surprise though. We're not gonna get, uh, pushback from the Vestal Fire Department. A lot of people have had a lot of meetings to discuss the technical elements of this project. It's been going on since fifteen.
What's the status of the, uh, the issue with the lab?
Uh, if the town of Vestal would give us a temporary certificate of occupancy for the portion that has been renovated, we would move the plant staff, uh, in the lab into there, but until the town of Vestal gives us that temporary certificate of occupancy, I can't put people in there.
Do we understand where that, like, why they haven't given us the, the temporary-
Because they say they are not willing to come out and inspect the facility until it is complete. I can't complete it until they let me have access to the other half of the lab.
So we're in like a catch twenty-two?
We're in a catch twenty-two. I've said that to many people.
So what's the, what's the course forward on that?
Uh, either the town of Vestal's gonna have to give us a certificate of occupancy for that one part of the facility or somebody's gonna have to go out and rent a temporary facility for the lab or they're gonna have to relocate temporarily to a part of the facility that doesn't require a temporary certificate of occupancy, uh, or we'll have to cancel the work. I am not going to put people in that facility and expose the owners of the facility as well as the designer and the company I work for, which is a liability based on the attorney for the board writing a letter explaining it as being our liability if somebody got hurt. I'm not gonna do it.
Jerry, what's their, what's the town Vestal's, uh, legal standing on that claim? I mean, do, do we need to get, do we need to have a meeting with the Vestal supervisor, Schaefer, to, to discuss this? I mean, can, can they give that certificate of occupancy or are they just saying they won't?
They are saying they won't, they can. Fazed construction happens all over the country, all over the town, so it's not an unusual thing. It does require them to, uh, do more diligence and sometimes to get a temporary occupancy like that, you have to do more work than what you're originally prescribed to do. In fact, we had a temporary certificate of occupancy on the administration building and the maintenance building because we needed to move plant staff from the location they were at into that building and the upper portion was completed before the lower portion was completed. And when we got ready to try to get, uh, the temporary certificate of occupancy, the town of Vestal stepped up and said, well, you need to do some additional fire protection measures. We did, implement those. They were of a lesser quality than the permanent installation, which was already in, but it's what they said they wanted, so we did it. It can be done. It's just the town has to be willing.
Mr. Mayor, have you spoken to the, uh, town supervisor on this issue?
I'm, uh, we, at our last discussion, we are exploring, uh, looking at costs on renting a temporary facility and, uh, we discussed me calling, uh, John Schaefer as well. This meeting was recently signed and placed on a call.
Okay, well-
But I, I will be placing the call.
Yeah.
For, for clarity, the, uh, building official is semi-autonomous and, and, uh, and I'm speaking a little bit more than I, more than I really know, but supervisors can necessarily will. That's been what I've been told. So I, I don't believe that there's a, this is a political solution. I mean, maybe it's code-based, but we talked about me placing the call.
If, if we were able to move them into the facility that's already completed, they would be in a safer operating position than they're currently in.
Sure.
Which is kind of ridiculous that the town won't work those on there.
So if it's not political and it's code-based, isn't that, how do we not anticipate this? What about it was unexpected?
What was unexpected is they would not issue a temporary certificate of occupancy. Not only do they do, people do that around the, the state of New York, the country, uh, they actually did it on the administration building. So there was no reason for us to believe it would not happen here.
And they didn't give us a reason?
They just say they are not going to come out and inspect or give us a certificate of occupancy until all construction in that structure is complete.
They did have a reason, that was the reason.
That was the reason.
All right.
So we're looking at a temporary lab so that we can take it as soon as possible.
I, I heard that there was a, um, a spill at the plant on Wednesday. Can you speak to that?
There was during the startup of the headworks, um, when the pumps were operating, there was a piece of, of the diversion, uh, diversion plate in the, uh, existing, uh, primary inflow channel that had not been removed and it caused a temporary backup which allowed the, uh, so it just came over the wall into the excavation area. It was cleaned up in accordance with state standards.
And that's not gonna result in any fines for us?
Shouldn't mean fines at all. But an alert went out on it. It should be a complete issue. If there are any fines, it'll be the contractors responsible to pay the fines. We're gonna call. If there are any fines that come out of D E C for that, we're gonna pass them through to the contractor. It was their, their control that failed to remove the, uh, the bathroom, uh, wall and the channel.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Jerry. Thank you for coming on. Appreciate it. Chuck, show your, your next.
I'll soften them.
Chuck's a lot tougher than you are.
One nine dash one two two, Chuck.
Okay, I'm speaking here for, um, Mr. Eggleston, Chief Eggleston, who's, uh, got a little today. Uh, but back in the mayor's, uh, state of the city address in February, he mentioned about, uh, purchasing a new fire truck for the fire department. Uh, that's basically what, uh, one twenty-two is, taking money out of fund balance of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, oh fifty-nine to purchase this, uh, new fire truck. We would have done it in, um, the budget coming in at two thousand twenty, but at the end of Jul- July, you'll see a letter here, the price of this, uh, fire truck's gonna go up. So if we place it before the end of July, it'll hold price.
And it takes about a year to fabricate these, doesn't it?
Nine months, a year, yeah.
Yeah. So it's nice to get this going now so it's ready for work.
Correct.
Was it your comments, Scott?
Is it, is there a reason why this wasn't in the budget that was set last year for this year?
We were gonna do it in the twenty twenty budget, Dan, but it would be more money, okay? We'd still do it the same way, use some fund balance, okay? Uh, except for to save, I think like twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars to do it now rather than run it through the budget in September.
Questions or comments?
Fair enough. No, I just said fair enough.
One nine dash one forty-three, Chuck.
These are, uh, things that I send down every once in a while as I start, as I'm cleaning up all the accounts. So these are basically, uh, monies that we have out there that are no longer valid. Uh, there was one item that is a, uh, bond, which is putting money back that we can no longer spend. The other stuff is grant money that we spent up, uh, funds and there's leftover funds where we didn't spend them and it's cleaning it all so someone doesn't spend it accidentally.
A hundred and ninety grand of traffic signals?
Yep.
But remember, that would have been, that would have been associated with a project where there was a city portion and a grant portion. And if the total project cost came in under, then that's what we have authorization for. So this is a part of cleaning that up, so. So you can't just use that for traffic signals? No, it's not a specific project.
And the problem with this one, this one's expired. We've owed the money in two thousand and fourteen and you can only use it up to five years. So this money's gone. We can't spend it now legally.
And, and what project was it, the product?
When I looked at it, it was generic traffic signals. It didn't say a specific thing, but it could very well run back to thirteen prior to moving in here.
Uh-huh. So we don't know why it wasn't, but.
Other questions or comments? Chuck on the one nine dash one two four, please.
One nine two four. When I was here last time, I told you that I'm having an retirement in my department. Uh, this is basically, uh, to cover the situation. I try to read from my notes. I think it's easier to tell you what I'm doing. We have a payroll supervisor that is retiring. We're taking that salary from a forty-nine thousand, five forty-seven down to forty-five thousand, seven ninety-four, okay? Between now and the end of the year, there'll be one thousand eight hundred and four dollars left in that account. We're moving that to contingency. Uh, the person that was the finance payroll specialist is gonna go into that supervisor position. Uh, her current salary is forty-two, seven ninety-eight. Um, we're gonna reduce that position to a payroll assistant at thirty-five thousand. In that case, there's five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents being saved. That's going to contingency. We're taking six thousand dollars, wait here, just so I don't screw up Ken on this one. There's ten thousand-
He's doing the roll order, but that's okay.
There's ten thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars that I'm taking out of, uh, health insurance and moving it to basically pay the payout of the person that's retiring so I can put the person into that supervisor's position immediately, okay? Which would be effective on July sixth, okay? And then I'm gonna take, the person that's retiring, we'll come back and help us out for the remainder of the year and I'm transferring six thousand dollars. I don't exactly know how much she's gonna be here, okay? So she's willing to come in and train us on some of the things, uh, that she hasn't trained us on. She's a person that we got, she's planning on retiring at the end of the year. She's doing it now because she came a little ill and, but she's willing to come in and help us, especially at the end of the year when we have to do all the closeouts of, uh, starting the new year and end, end of the year. Uh, but she's willing to do that. And then after the, this all gets done, I'm gonna fill that payroll assistant position, which will be advertised after, uh, we get through this week here. And depending on who that is, if there's savings, if there's savings in that city or, or in that, wherever that position comes from, we're gonna put that back into the health insurance, over taking a ten thousand dollars.
You'd be really maneuverish, but you're a maneuvering guy.
And just the title only references really one thing. So Chuck and I talked about this this afternoon. It's really gonna be four different sections under that one title, right, to, for all the different things. Uh, the one question that I would ask, since it's really, two of them are related there, three of them, we need to do them all together, but theoretically I could do two or three different ordinances, right? But since this is all, one flows to the next, we're gonna do it all in one ordinance, right? If people don't want, if, if you don't wanna vote for one of them, tell me and I'll, I'll separate that. But right now, it's all gonna be in one ordinance.
Questions or comments?
And the title's more confusing than, there's more to it than the existing title.
All right, Chuck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jared, uh, give two of them here, please.
Bringing Ray in as well, um, just to answer any engineering related questions. As this, uh, grant applications are in relation to two, you know, pretty major infrastructure projects, to kinda back up a little bit, um, each year is part of a consolidated funding application, the city puts in grant applications, some of which require local municipal resolution, uh, to ensure that the body that, you know, procreates funds and everything is on board with the grant applications and that if awarded, that these projects can move forward. So, um, the grant program that we identify is, is a bit unique in, in, in the engineering world, I think good because it can cover, uh, up to fifty percent of the projects, uh, up to two million, is the Climate Smart Communities Grant Program. Binghamton is not a certified climate smart community, however, we are eligible to apply for, uh, funding for these, uh, specific projects because, uh, they address flood resiliency. Um, the first project, uh, that we're looking to apply for funding and, and a draft resolution is included, is the Moeller Street Pump Station Project. Uh, this is a big topic on the east side, Council of Skandl knows. Localized flooding during storm events, uh, has been terrible for that specific part of town. Last August, we had a catastrophic flooding event that everyone's aware of. But, uh, this, uh, project would install a pump station to serve the Moeller Street, uh, stormwater system, uh, pumping localized stormwater from basically one side of the flood wall up and over the other to provide relief to those residents. Uh, we've done, uh, an engineering analysis, Barton Le Judas has done that. They looked at the entire, it's not an aquifer, what's the term? Water-
Drainage area.
Drainage area, uh, to determine whether a pump station was needed. They, they agree that one is needed and they will, uh, design, uh, the pump station and will move forward with the capital project. So that capital project has been identified as, um, four point, excuse me, let me see here, uh, a total of four point seven, four two million, correct?
That's the roughest.
Okay. And that, um, we're, we're seeking two million from the Climate Smart Communities program, up to two million. So this is just a resolution that certifies that if we are awarded the grant, which would happen in December, that we would go ahead and, uh, have the money in place, which we would bond for the project to, to see it through completion. This is a project we will be doing anyway. This is a project that we will be bonding for anyway. This is a project we will be doing anyway. This is a project that we will be bonding for anyway. And so this is an opportunity for us to get two million dollars taken off the cost. Same category, we have the ongoing six-word sanitary sewer interceptor project. Because I'm not as well-versed, I'll let Ray explain what exactly that is, what I N O means, and why we're seeing it there, and then I can go into the rest of it.
As you know, the sewer system in the city has collector pipes, and they all drain down to the interceptors which run along the river and end up going to the treatment plant. And one of the major ones is on the south side, and over the years, sections of it have been replaced and upgraded, and now it's time to do the piece from, um, in front of the water plant, out to, um, that's a menu.
Oh, what, Duke Street?
Yeah, Duke Street, yeah. And a good portion of that runs along the river now in the riverbank. And when the river's up, it infiltrates. That means water enters that pipe. When the river's low, sewage can flow out and get into the river. So it's not, not in a good location because of the erosion that happens when we get floods, that you could have a major pipe break and it would be in river. So what we want to do is replace that line, make it larger, to accommodate the greater flows that are coming due to population increases, because it was, uh, not large enough originally. And so we'll increase it. We're also going to move it back away from the riverbank farther. And it's, uh, going to be a lot better for all the users. It'll be less I N I for the treatment plant, so it's a plus all the way around. Ray, is that part of the reason why Duke Street, a lot of the sewers were backing up the houses? That's part of it. Because I had a few houses back then, and a couple of them got demolished in the FEMA, and then the other ones coming down soon, and they've already got, over there.
Next couple of weeks.
Yeah. And so they were getting sewer backup into their cellars, and it was just black. And it was just nasty. So the neighbors are going to appreciate that thing.
So I would hope we'd be successful on both these grants. It's a lot of money, and if, you know, all money is limited funding, so, you know, maybe one, maybe the other. But in any event, it would be kind of critical, unanticipated funding for the projects. And we fit right in. We've already discussed with the engineering consultant. They're on board with this and are supporting our application as well.
Yes. I should add that these are not the only ones that we would apply for. If we can find any other ones, Barton and Judas will automatically start putting paperwork together for any other ones that we may qualify for.
Question, Councilwoman?
Would our application for some of this money be strengthened in any way by seeking that Climate Smart designation?
It would. It would. Becoming a certified climate smart community would, um, would make our grants more competitive, more competitive, and I think would unlock additional grants that we are currently not eligible for.
And what, what are we missing in ter, have we just not applied? Are we otherwise eligible? Like, what, what would we have to do that we're not already doing to get there?
Yep. So there are a couple, um, there's a pathway to become climate smart eligible. The two major state programs as it relates to local government green certifications are Clean Energy Community through NYSERTA, and then Climate Smart Community through New York State D E C. We've obtained the Clean Energy Community designation. We're the first city in the southern tier to do so. The Climate Smart pathway is a little bit more expensive, because there are certain actions that require consultants on board. The city has done a lot of what it would take to get the certification. We have taken the pledge. I think it was done two thousand and ten or something. We have a climate action plan. We have, you know, conversion to LED streetlights is, I think, one of them. So we have a baseline. It's just that the next steps would require some money associated with them. So we are looking to pursue that, and actually, our planning department has interns right now working on those certification efforts. Some of it can be done in-house, some of it unfortunately we have to spend to, to outsourced.
What's an example?
Um, creating a greenhouse gas inventory, a baseline inventory of what your greenhouse gases are right now and what you hope to reduce. A climate action plan that was done in-house by the planning department in two thousand and eleven. It's a fine document, but having an updated one that actually takes into account kind of the most cutting edge of green technology, I think, would be important. A lot of benchmarking, creating a citywide composting effort, creating a city hall composting effort. Those are the types of things. We have, you know, Juliet Berlin ran the Lord's Hospital composting effort. So we have things in place. It's just a matter of executing them in addition to kind of all the other stuff. I'm a hundred percent supportive of it, and I'm excited about the opportunity, hopefully, before we're David D's office, we can get it done.
Have we identified the specific things that we would have to, that we wouldn't be able to do in-house, that we'd have to pay a consultant to do?
Yeah, um, we've, we've, there, again, it's, um, you have to get to a certain number of points, and you can kind of pick your menu of what the points are. So we identified the ones that are getting, that'll get us ten and twenty points on the way up to, I think, a hundred and sixty. But you can, you can do a lot of little things or some major specific projects. And those are the ones that would cost more money, which I think would be more time-sensitive and effective. We have, we have an idea of that, yes.
And ballpark it? How much would it cost for us to get all the way to a hundred and sixty?
Hundreds of thousands.
Okay.
For those big-ticket items that would have real community impacts, that type of thing. But there are some smaller ones that take a lot of time. Again, Dr. Berlin's very well-versed in, in creating a composting effort, but that's just a lot of in-house time that she has to spend.
So, so it sounds like we're moving along, but not only can we only move incrementally, it sounds like the process is very incremental as well.
Somewhat, yeah. You know, we can, there, there's things that we've kind of thrown, uh, thrown the book at, and we've gotten done. You know, the LED streetlights was a big one. For, just, we were better suited for the Clean Energy Community designation, and have taken advantage of that, and got the two fifty in grant money, as opposed to the Climate Smart.
Are there questions or comments? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Just on to funny ones.
So first we have RL nineteen dash one one three, authorized Park Outdoor America to construct an off-premise advertising sign in two forty-nine Court Street. RL nineteen one fourteen, sale of one ninety-nine Murray Street and twenty-five Lydia Street to Laura Cantala. RL nineteen one fifteen, establish standard workday for elected and employment officials as required by the New York State Comptroller. RL nineteen dash one eighteen, amend the two thousand and nineteen capital budget for various public health projects. RL nineteen dash one sixteen, crack tax rules for the Feld Street. RL nineteen dash one seventeen, pre-parking for July fourth through the seventh at State Street Ramp and Water Street Ramp. Another legislation that has been added to the agenda for tomorrow is RL nineteen dash one oh five. It's amending the two thousand and nineteen thing to just city sewage treatment facility budget for fines and penalties.
That one's not on here?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. I just wanted to.
Questions on RL one nine, nine one one three through one nine one one eight? Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have one other thing I wanted to.
Go ahead, sure.
Uh, well, I was just curious, because I've been getting a lot of, a lot of interest in the zoning overhaul and from my constituents since the whole thing with the Decker Mansion. Really got people interested in what the city can do in a comprehensive, proactive fashion to deal with some of these issues. And I know we had talked about maybe having Tito come down. There was a conflict a while back. I was wondering if we could still have somebody come down and give us an update, because my understanding is that it's more or less ready to go, and I guess I'm wondering.
Jared, do you know?
Yeah, I think if you update it, it's, it's really in the office of the mayor's hands. We're seeking additional input from a lot of different types of stakeholders, including those in the development community, neighborhood groups, to see if there are additional tweaks that we need to do. We've also been talking to former officials in Rochester. Rochester, at any conference you go to, I know Councilwoman Cross knows this, it's kind of looked at as like a gold standard for neighborhood business districts and revitalization. So we've been talking to them to see, let's take a look at what sort of draft zoning legislation that we have, and what are we not thinking of, what are we omitting, that type of thing. So it, uh, Tito worked with Ken and myself to come up with kind of a first draft, and we're just reviewing it. We got, uh, input from the Planning Commission as well, which did change a couple of different things. So it's just still being worked on essentially.
Sure. And there was a public comment period when it, when it went up on the city's website, which was awesome. I think that, you know, a lot of people appreciated being able to see the process midstream. Once we have this input from all these other stakeholders, is it going to go back for public comment? And what's the process looking like moving forward?
I would say that when, you know, there's, there's a good piece of legislation that, you know, we can, we can agree on, um, we, if there's any substantial changes, we may send it back to the Planning Commission for their calls. Certainly, as it's a local law amending zoning.
It's going to have a public hearing to amend the law.
You have to have a, and, and if City Council wanted to have kind of an extended period on that, I think that would be reasonable to allow for as much public comment as possible.
Jared, um, on the front street, you mentioned the, the mansion on Front Street. There was a lot of input of, and they wanted to do student housing there. What's the zoning there on Front, is the whole Front Street from Riverside to, uh, to Main Street, the same zoning?
I'm not sure.
It's commercial there, but what we're trying to do is anything, uh, one of the stuff, because I actually was working on the legislation as well before it went to Jared and Zinkad. For the zoning, I worked on it with Juliette, and one of the things we worked on is making sure that student housing can't go into the big mansions anymore. It'd be more pioneered towards small housing, housing, like smaller, like actual houses and stuff.
There's a lot of the zoning that has to do with, you know, more than four bedrooms per unit, that, that is a, that should be a trigger for a separate series of actions that a developer has to take or scrutiny by Planning Commission, that.
You just can't ban it all.
It'll make people go, um, it'll, it'll make people really prove, poops in the pudding kind of thing. You know, they'll have to go and go to the zoning board to get variances and whatnot. It'll make it a lot harder for them to do student housing.
And as a release of that, I mean, it just, you know, the city, again, should not be incentivizing low number of units, high number of bedrooms. I mean, that's been the mayor's decision since day one, yeah.
And unless the project itself can absorb the impact, that, that's become the issue. And it really doesn't have to do with who the residents are. It has to do with the impacts.
And parking.
Yeah, well, that's one of the, for example, Twenty Hallie had its own parking, so when they converted it, it had minimal impact.
Other questions or comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.